Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Thanks for the pledge remarks by Councilmember Palermo.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. 2023 is here, and let's have a great meeting.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We want to wish you a Happy New Year, Happy 2023 in our first meeting of the year. I encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. We'll start with the proclamation today that I will read. On behalf of Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month, I believe we have Trevor Towey here to accept the proclamation, so I'll give him a chance to speak here in a second on behalf of Local 385. But we'll start with the proclamation itself, which is signed by all council members. And here's how it reads. Whereas Omaha firefighters serve our community by putting our safety above their own, and whereas firefighters often work in a toxic environment of smoke, soot, and carcinogens, and whereas according to research firefighters have a 9% greater chance of being diagnosed with cancer and a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general population, and whereas firefighter occupational cancer is the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths in professional firefighters and has reached epidemic levels, and whereas studies have found a direct correlation between the chemical exposures firefighters experience on the job and their increased risk for cancer, and whereas all 50 states recognize cancer as a presumptive workers' compensation claim for firefighters, and whereas early detection of cancer through routine screenings leads to earlier treatment and better disease outcomes, including improved survival and reduced morbidity, and whereas the International Association of Firefighters and the Firefighter Cancer Support Network have declared January as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month, now therefore be it resolved, the City of Omaha and the City Council declare January 2023 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. Thanks for your service.
Thank you, Trevor Towey, Omaha Professional Firefighter, 6005 Grover Street. I just want to thank you, Mr. President, and all the members of the council, not only for this recognition, but for all the support that you've given Omaha firefighters in regards to this important issue. I'm especially thankful for your recent investment that allowed for us to get a grant that's going to provide cancer screening for every Omaha firefighter starting this year. And I can tell you, I just left a meeting in regards to implementing that program, and I'm convinced it's going to save lives and extend the careers of firefighters, and that'll enable us to be able to stay on the job and keep Omaha citizens safe. So again, I thank you so very much.
Adam Clark.
Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for Curry in a Hurry located 8303 Maple Street.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. I think we have the applicant by Zoom.
Yes, my name is Sancharli Patel. We also have another one, actually Jitendra Pandit, who is one of the applicants is actually waiting in the Zoom waiting room right now to be admitted to the meeting.
Thank you, so you're both here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
All right. I think we have them on Zoom now. In the meantime, I'll ask for any... Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. In the meantime, I'll ask for any other proponents that might be here or in the audience. If not, I'll ask for any opponents. I don't see any, so I'll close the public hearing. I do have one question for you, Ms. Patel. If you're the best one to answer this question. I'm familiar with the location, it's in my district. It's a former Taco John's, as some know it, but I think your business has been successful there, and it looks to me like you're doing a good job. But I did have some, I guess one contact at least, of an immediate neighbor expressing some concern about trash and maybe property maintenance concerns, that they didn't have one of the previous owner. So my question to you is just making you aware of that, and then seeing if you have a reaction to that, or if there's something more you might be able to do to address those concerns.
So typically what has happened was, since we started renting the property, in the last three years, it has happened twice that somebody else came and trashed, dumped their trash outside our trash bins, and we have both the times reported it. You know, we had called the non-emergency number and have reported that. So that wasn't actually the restaurant, but some, you know, different people coming out, putting their trash, their belongings outside our trash containers. So we have had that instance happen twice in the past three years, and that was definitely been taken care of immediately the morning we came in by the staff.
Okay.
But if there is anything else, we'll definitely be more vigilant and take care of it.
Great, I appreciate that. The more you can do, the better in terms of being a good neighbor right there, right? All right, thank you. With that, there's no further lights, is there a motion? I'll second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Sips on 10th located at 1022 South 10th Street.
The public hearing and vote on number seven is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom, represented by Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, President, fast for seven members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804, South 37th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I spoke to Mike Urzen... Sean, help me, what's his last name? The Jock, thank you. I spoke to Mike on Sunday, and they own some businesses in my district in Blackstone, and I know they put a lot of work into this down there. It's the old Banana Joe's site on 10th and Pacific, so I'll be glad to be supporting this today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for B&amp;B Theater Omaha, Oakview Plaza 14, located at 3555 South 140th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please. Just name an address and then, yeah.
Dennis McIntyre, PO Box 129, Liberty, Missouri. I work for B&amp;B Theaters.
You're going to answer questions? Thanks. Any other proponents on number eight? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. And enough for council members, this would take a rule suspension. Motion in a second? All at once?
Yep.
Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Mio Italiano Restaurant located at 3001 South 32nd Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Council Travis J. Cutt, on behalf of applicants, 1246 Golden Gate Drive in Papillion. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for Shankar Food Mart located at 822 North 40th Street, East Communications and Opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please. Please come down. Okay. I'll take your name and address for both of you as proponents.
Sure. Kul Sasankar, 822 North 48th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131.
Okay, Bim Gorong, 7722 North 29th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. I'm the interpreter.
Thank you. And you're just here to answer questions, right?
The right questions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Mr. President, gentlemen, I appreciate you being here today. I spoke to the neighborhood association, and they're neutral, so they're supportive of you and welcome you to the neighborhood and wish you the best. I was wondering if you would make a stipulation, there would be no sales of single containers less than 32 ounces of beer with your permit? Are you willing to accept that today?
Very good.
Yes?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I wish you the best of luck. That's an area that I grew up in, very close by, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to support this, Mr. President. Thank you.
With that condition?
With the condition of no single, no sales of single containers less than 32 ounces of beer.
Okay, is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Mr. President, motion in a second? Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, to consider a Class D liquor license for Cumming Food Mart located at 4002 Cumming Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jan Hedley appearing with the owner of Zane Rana, Faisal Ali, and we're here to answer any questions. Good afternoon on this beautiful January day. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we ask you to vote in favor of this license.
Thank you. And then just your address for the record, too?
711 North 108th Court, I'm sorry, Omaha, 68154.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would, please. Thank you.
I always have to make one mistake.
How are you today?
Pardon?
How are you today? How are you today?
We're good. You're good. How are you?
Great.
Nice.
Just wanted to ask a few questions regarding public engagement. Have we reached out in that area in terms of neighborhoods and other people nearby regarding your intent today?
We haven't reached out to a neighborhood because this was an existing license, but since we took over, we are just, you know, making sure we stay in compliance, check the ID, do all that, but in term of reaching out to neighborhood for approval or something, if that's what you're asking, no.
Not necessarily approval, but letting them know what's going on in the area.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that's very important, as we as a nation are trying to encourage civic engagement, and we're trying to be inclusive, and so as a good neighbor, that would be something that we would want to do now that you've changed ownership. They should become familiar with you, and you should become familiar with them.
Yes.
So I would strongly recommend that. And while this isn't existing, there was a license, and it's changing over ownership, that's fine, but again, I would encourage you to reach out to that neighborhood and the individuals directly alongside of you, to begin dialoguing with them as a good neighbor should.
Understood.
Okay, and so because this is, has been a previous license before at this location, I will go ahead and motion to approve this liquor license.
I misunderstood the question, but yes, we did, especially, you know, the neighbor right next door. Like, I am usually at the premises myself, and I actually know them by name, you know, the neighbors, and I, most of the customers are regular customer, I am engaging myself with them, but we will improve on that, too.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
So Ms. Johnson, yeah, I think this is where Mr. Harding's going. There is a current restriction on this license that stipulates selling nothing smaller than a pint.
Right.
To renew that stipulation, that's something that would need to be part of your motion and agreed to by the applicant today.
Right, I'm sorry, let me amend that motion. Go ahead.
Can I answer that? We're well aware of that restriction, and we also, Ali plans not to sell anything smaller than a pint, and he's not asking for that, and we have no problem with that restriction. Basically, the shooters are just a litter problem, and that's basically what that's aimed at. And previously with, I did Mr. Gupta's application, and we agreed to that also with the Neighborhood Association, so...
Thank you, and so just so that we're clear, and just so that we're above board regarding this motion, we're going to change that and modify it just a little bit to say that you're in agreement with complying with the current stipulation of that liquor license, and therefore I move to approve that with that condition.
Right.
Thank you.
The motion, I just wanted to make it clear for the clerk.
Thank you.
Yes, I think both those are consistent and accurate, so there's a motion in a second? No further lights? You have a light, Mr. Harding?
Sorry. I'm gonna... A pint is 16 ounces, not 32. That's a quart, right? So are we at, we're at a pint, I believe, right?
Current restriction is a pint, I believe.
So is your second for the pint?
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I didn't realize what the original was. Mr. Hedley, what is the condition that you're willing to agree to?
Of the restrictions?
Yes, is it less than 32? Or 16?
I don't think there is any restriction on selling singles in the beers.
Okay, so is yours a pint?
Yes, less than a pint.
Okay, I apologize, I think we were confused, we were doing it from the last one, which previously was 30.
Right, it's less than a pint. Previously, it was less than 750, and then we went to the liquor commission, and they said less than a pint.
Okay, I'll let Ms. Johnson, it's your motion, I guess, do we want to keep it the same as before? I will second whatever you would like, but I think the original condition was a pint.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and be clear, we're going to, I move that we approve this liquor license with the condition of not selling things, or selling anything less than a pint.
Correct, less than a pint.
And I'll second that one.
Okay, motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12, to consider a Class D liquor license for 96 Quick and Friendly located at 4751 South 96th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom. Go ahead, I think you're off mute there. Are we working here? Okay. Yeah. We're working to get you off mute here just a minute. Okay, try that. Looks like we might be having some technical difficulty there. I'm going to assume you're here to answer questions, and we'll come back to you here in a minute. Are there any other proponents on number 12 that might be in the audience? Seeing none of the, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll do this one more try. You're off mute, but I think we're just having trouble on your end, perhaps. There, okay, I can hear you now. Want to try your name and address for the record?
4796 House 96th Street.
Gotcha. And you're here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close public hearing and see if there's any lights from council members or a motion? Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, to consider a Class D liquor license for Mega Saver located at 4015 South 42nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Also by Zoom here, okay, try that.
Good afternoon. Name is Lola Khalikova, I'm here with TFL Inc., requesting liquor license for the location, Mega Saver location at 415 South 42nd Street. Corporate office location is at 202 South 73rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. Here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
One public hearing can be held for Class B liquor licenses for Family Dollar located at 3552 Levinworth Street, 2930 Sprague Street, 1516 Northwest Radio Highway, 834 South 24th Street, East Communications and Opposition.
Public hearing and votes on number 14, 15, 16, and 17 are today. We have the proponent, who is the same applicant by Zoom here, Mr. Cromley, you're recognized.
Thank you. Jonathan Cromley, located at 1100 Circle 75 Parkway, Suite 210, Atlanta, Georgia, 30339. Here to answer any questions about these four Family Dollar applications.
Thank you. Any other proponents on these items?
Chad Thomas, 208 Charleston Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, District Manager, Family Dollar Stores.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion to deny this. Back in 2019, there was an application for this location, and it was denied. There's multiple establishments very nearby this. I heard from many people in the neighborhood for the simple reason that nothing's changed in that neighborhood in the last three and a half years from when the council denied it in 19. I want to make a motion to deny this today. Thank you.
And that motion's for number 14, correct?
That's for number 14 at 30, sorry.
We'll vote each of these independently, just run those.
Right. For 3552 Levinworth Street, number 14.
Okay. That's a motion to deny. Public hearing is closed, council members can press the light if they'd like. I'll second the denial to have it on the floor. Any further comments from council members?
Mr. President, this is on number 14, we're voting on right.
Number 14, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, no further lights? Roll call.
Johnson.
It's a motion to deny.
It's a motion to deny. Yes. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 15.
Is there a motion or further comments on item 15? This is the location at 2930 Sprague. Mr. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am a little bit, as well as community members in this community, are a little bit concerned about Family Dollar's mission and its goal and its purpose. While we very much appreciate the ability to purchase goods at a, at this location, the concern is that family values in an area where people are struggling to meet day-to-day demands, such as having food on their table. The fact that we're going to provide a convenience for this community to have a choice to perhaps compromise putting food on the table for their loved ones, for their family, as opposed to getting a beer or something like that, is something that this community is struggling with already. When I looked at the map on, at this location, we have three schools within a 10-block radius. We also have five facilities that are supportive services for children, such as the Omaha Learning Center at Skinner, Boys and Girls Club at Skinner Magnet, Skinner Elementary School is there, B&amp;B Boxing Academy, which is a supportive service for children. We also have Sisters and Brother Learning Center there. Again, family values, I'm really concerned, as well as the community is concerned, with issuing a new liquor license here. We do have 30th then Ames, which is nearby, a grocery store that can certainly provide that convenience that you're hopeful in helping with providing the convenience of selling beer, but I just think that this market in this area is already saturated with liquor stores. So therefore, I will be making a motion to deny this. I will not be able to support this, or to be clear, I won't be supporting anything that Family Dollar does regarding liquor, because I believe that your value system, or the way your vision and your mission statement in terms of supporting family in this community where people are challenged in protecting their family is already struggling. I just don't think this is a good business model that you should develop and employ in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And was that a motion?
Motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny.
Second.
And a second? Any further lights? Seeing none, roll call.
Johnson.
Motion to deny, so that would be yes?
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two.
Item 16, any lights or motions? I will acknowledge this is in my district. I have shared the same concerns being expressed by Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Johnson in the past in many of these locations, including number 17, which I have voted against in the past for that reason of density, and likely will do again. This one is 1516 Northwest Radio. I have had some concern from residents, I wouldn't say it's overwhelming, but it does seem to me to be a similar situation, so I can't make a motion, but I would probably keep... So I can't make a motion, but I would probably keep it consistent with what seems to be the trend of these three, or these four applications in, in my opinion. Motion and second to deny. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. And maybe I just, I don't have the information. I mean, I saw that there were a couple opponents, which, you know, is not rare. We had opponents on number ten. We have them weekly, but I, I guess maybe I haven't been filled in with the family values of Family Dollar. Does the applicant want to share? I mean, what, what is your mission statement? I guess I just, I'm not sure what values Family Dollar is, is violating. So unless another council member would want to fill me in and change my mind, I wanted to know what those values were.
Would you like to recognize the?
Yeah. I guess Jonathan, and I apologize, I can't see your last name on the screen, so I can only see your first name. But I mean, do you want to give me just a little information about Family Dollar, their values, and maybe what you do in the community?
Absolutely. As we've provided background information to the council in the past, Family Dollar is a family-oriented store that provides a wide range of food and other retail items. The alcohol sales that Family Dollar engages in is limited to beer and wine throughout the country in these locations. As you know from the application, it'd be limited to beer only. It is not a discount alcohol seller. The selection of beers and the pricing is comparable to any other grocery store in the city or in the region. We believe that the added selection and the benefit to the customers has proven out across the country, and in particular, even in other stores in Nebraska and Omaha. What we have seen corporately is that in those stores that offer the option for those that desire to purchase beer or wine, they tend to pick up more items outside of beer and wine. In other words, the, the per basket purchase increases. We call that the halo effect. So folks that are there to purchase the family meal, the sundries, the goods they eat for their home and their children, well, they might pick up a six-pack or a bottle of wine in the process, which increases the sales for the store, which helps these stores stay open and profitable in every neighborhood that they're in. And as we all know, you know, while we do adhere to varying values, you know, Family Dollar is a corporation and it must make a profit for shareholders in order to sustain the jobs that it offers to its employees. Furthermore, they take selling alcohol very, very seriously nationwide. From two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one, they have amassed a point zero zero four percent alcohol sales violation rate nationwide. So if you were to license sales for Family Dollar, the chances of any underage sales or illegal or improper sales occurring at our stores is infinitesimally small. So we would ask that you would consider Family Dollar as a good corporate citizen, as an employer in your community that desires to increase the options available to your citizens and its customers.
And do you know how many people you employ in the Omaha area?
I do not, but I can get that number to you fairly within a day or two.
Do you have any idea how many stores you have in the Omaha area?
I know in Nebraska, across statewide, we have, I believe, between fifty and sixty stores. Omaha alone, I'm aware of twelve, because we have been assisting in processing the alcohol, the Class B sales licenses for that many stores in Omaha, to the limits.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have any further questions, other than there were comments made earlier about denying them because they don't support family values. And I, I simply just wanted more information about that, about their not supporting family values that could potentially sway my decision.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Crumley, I believe it's interesting too. I think you're a national, I think you're a national charity partner with Boys and Girls Club of America. I think you've also, I think Dollar, Dollar Tree is a sister company or related entity. And I think you have the Dollar Tree Disaster Relief, Associated Disaster Relief Fund as well, too. And, and I think there's one other that, that I'm forgetting. My point is, I think that you're involved in the, it seems like you're involved in, in the community, not only in, in Nebraska, but, but nationwide, too. So I, I think that was important to get on the record of, of the important work that you give back to the communities that you're investing in.
Thank you. And you're correct. Operation Home Trun is the other charity that they're actively involved with that provides emergency financial and other assistance for families and service members and wounded warriors. And you're correct, Dollar Tree is the parent company for Family Dollar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crumley, I had one question for you. We're talking about family values. I was curious, in your stores nationwide, or even more specific here in Omaha, do you consider the right to collectively bargain and be organized into a union? Do you feel like that is a family value?
I'm not aware of that corporate policy. I, I just don't have any alcohol licenses nationwide. So I'm happy to check out the corporate ladder there, but I do not have the answer to that question.
Okay, thanks. I got nothing better.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second to deny. No further lights? Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two.
Item seventeen. Is there lights or a motion? Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to deny this applicant for this establishment.
There's a motion. I'll second. Any further lights?
A couple. I'd like to have a couple of questions if I would, please. Ryan, are you here somewhere? I want to, I want to hand these, Ryan? I want to hand these to you. Thanks. Thank you.
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney.
Can you put those on the slide there for me, Ryan? That, that first one with, it shows the four. So this shows the, the applicant at the address of eight thirty-four South Twenty-fourth Street. There's one, two, three, four, five liquor licenses within, maybe Brinker's got a better arm than I do, but you could throw a snowball and probably hit all five of those from the Family Dollar store, maybe in a couple throws. If you go a little further south, it's not on that map, but about two blocks south of where they want this license, there's also another establishment that sells alcohol. And I wanted to read, because I did my homework on this specific location. On the eighteenth of October, I got a, an email from Mr. James Bailey, and it read, "Councilman Bagley, I represent Family Dollar on licensing matters. I recently filed for an application to sell beer for take-home only at the Family Dollar store in your district. Wanted to provide you with some additional information about Family Dollar." Left an attachment. "I welcome the opportunity to discuss further at your convenience. Thanks for all you do." And that was on the eighteenth of October. And I responded on the second of November. That was after speaking to staff, the Omaha Police Department and others, neighborhood folks. I replied back to them on the second of November. "Thank you, James, for reaching out to me. I have discussed with staff and stakeholders in this area, and I have concluded I respectfully will not be in support of this liquor license. This has been a longtime destitute area. There are many police and business issues in this area with seven to eight establishments, and I, it's probably six. But I said at the time, I thought it was seven to eight, that are very close by already who hold licenses. I left you a voice message this afternoon as well on your office number. So I never heard back, and that's fine. But I can see that I got nowhere when I left that long message and sent the email on why I had concerns with issuing, you're voting for a liquor license here. So for the same reasons, without prolonging this, I'm making a motion to deny this for the, we had talked about, I guess, important to get on the record. If a liquor license was granted here with the crime issues in the area, the neighborhood's working hard to help people. There, you know, you have people out procuring alcohol, then urinating or going back into the store to get more alcohol. Multiple neighborhoods, associations, and citizens together, together one right across the street that does outreach to help people get back on their feet that are homeless or struggling. They are against it. Again, the Omaha Police Department. So for those reasons, I'm absolutely going to vote to deny this, and that's my motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
And that, and that's why I was already seconded, and that's why I did second it in the respect that density is an issue here. And we talk about density frequently in North Omaha, and that's why I've also voted to deny some licenses in, in sensitive areas. And this is a very sensitive area, as Mr. Bagley just noted. And it has a lot of density and a lot of ancillary issues that I don't think would be benefited by adding another liquor license. It's no reflection upon, in my opinion, the, the company or, or how they handle their business. It's just location. First motion and second to deny. I don't see any further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Items eighteen and nineteen can be considered together for Highlander East replat one, located south of Twenty-ninth and Burdette Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, and these are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on number eighteen and nineteen are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin and Associates, three five five two Farnham Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer Seventy-five North, who is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See not any opponents.
Hello, Luke Schrour, twenty-five twenty-two South Thirty-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am being an opponent today. First of all, Happy New Year, council members and Omaha public. I'm going to be against this today because I want to push a little bit harder. In this neighborhood, we have four bus stops right on Thirtieth Street. That's a two to five-minute walk top, tops. There's a Hardy Coffee, Creighton University at Highliner, a Walgreens, a Baptist Church, Emmanuel Community Church, multiple churches. I'm not going to list them all. There's a dentist, Dr. Diane Achuba. Charles Drew Health Center is also close. This is a walkable neighborhood with access to public transportation. So I see in the plat. If you guys can hear me, I'll just talk louder.
We can hear you. We'll try to figure out the microphone.
Okay, there it is, maybe. I'm, I'm against the vacation of the street because I think this is an opportunity for Omaha. We've talked a lot about trying to get green, and I'm a proponent for separating infrastructure. I think we have an opportunity here to make a pedestrian and bicycle-only path between these two areas. If we build between on this side and on this side, this dead road could become a pedestrian and bicycle-only corridor for people, and that could extend all the way up here to Lake Street, I think that would be. We've got the university students, and we're trying to update and get our city to be more green. This is a perfect opportunity not to give up that space designated for a corridor anyway. We don't have to give it to cars, but we can reimagine and think, how can we use these spaces to the best of their ability? So I drew a little picture here. It's kind of modeled like a brownstone, I guess. But it doesn't have to be all housing. There could be housing above with cafes or something underneath. But I challenge the developers in this city to think outside the box and try to make interesting spaces for people. This is a human-scale thing. It's not made for cars. And if you do want a car, the backside of it could have the road with access to your parking garages, and it's still that three-story-tall space. It's a narrower space. It's at a human scale. So the only reason I do like that we're trying to make more housing for Omaha, but I want to push our developers to think a little bit harder about how do we make things human-scale again? This is close to downtown. We're about to make a skyscraper, and we're going to need the density. But we also want people to take those buses to get downtown, or ride a bike to go run up to a Walgreens, or to run over to Creighton and grab food. So let's see if I got everything. Yeah, basically, I don't want you to vacate that street right away and things. If you've got any questions. Other than that, that's all I had today for this item. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing on public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank the gentleman for bringing to our attention the green space and the, the opportunity for us to look at things a little bit different, especially in this day and time. But I would like for the developer in Sydney, if you guys could come and share your views on that suggestion.
Good afternoon. Sidney Franklin, Seventy-five North, two one one two North Thirtieth Street, Omaha, six eight one one one. I think there may be a little bit of a misunderstanding about the vacation, and I'll let Terry with Airheart Griffin. He's our engineer representing the project, who's been with us since day one and with Highlanders, our redevelopment activity. This replat for this subdivision will allow Seventy-five North to expand our single-family for-sill housing initiative in a really creative way, factoring into the kind of challenging topography of the site that also factors in some sound mitigation requirements that we have to consider because we're just on the west side of the Seventy-five, Seventy-five Highway. Twenty, and I'll let Terry comment on this, but Twenty-eighth Street, yes, has been vacated. But we've also, with the city of Omaha, there's a brand-new Twenty-eighth Avenue that is a beautiful, almost whimsical street that's been, that was added last year. And so I'll let Terry kind of review the process that we went through to determine those public improvements that have dictated what our site plan is for these single-family homes in this subdivision.
Yeah, so we, so we did recently vacate the Twenty-eighth Street, which was adjacent to the Highway Seventy-five right-of-way. However, it has been closed for a number of years. The street was, you know, broken down, and there was concrete barriers keeping traffic from going there because it was a dangerous area. There was dumping and stuff. And so that was actually removed. The right-of-way was vacated, and a new Twenty-eighth Avenue right-of-way was dedicated, which winds from Twenty-eighth Street and Blondo and does an S-curve and connects to Burdette and Twenty-eighth Avenue on the north. Part of what was done with this is we have added some detention ponds on the east side of Twenty-eighth Avenue, which are adding some green space. That's also helping for detention and water quality for the Highlander Phase Four development up the hill. The lot that we are planning to plat does not change the right-of-way at all. The right-of-way is already set. It would merely divide this lot into single-family home lots, which face Blondo Street, Twenty-eighth Avenue, and Twenty-ninth Street. And we have, over the years, since two thousand fourteen, when we started working with Seventy-five North and Bryn Shore, we looked at a number of different options for this area. We looked at multifamily. We looked at single-family. And a lot of different configurations for streets and everything. As, as Sidney said, this is a very challenging area because of the topography. We have about sixty to seventy-foot of drop from Twenty-ninth Street down to the east side of this. So it was challenging, and, and it does limit the options. We looked at rear garage entry options. But ultimately, it came down to two rows of single-family housing that worked best, and, and also incorporating this water quality detention.
Thank you, and thank you for giving much attention to those details and offering the explanation that you provided. I go ahead, and I'll make a motion to approve this. Thank you.
Motion and second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Do you have to ask for further opponents?
Larry, sit down. You're out of order. Next item, please.
Move the podium over there so you can see people here that want to speak. It says a public...
We're on number twenty now, Larry.
It says a public hearing, sir.
All right. Mr. Benson?
Item twenty, a resolution to approve the Square Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located southwest of South Thirtieth and Leavenworth Streets in an amount up to one million eight-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This TIF redevelopment project is the Square Apartments. It combines four parcels on Leavenworth Street, at Thirtieth and Leavenworth Street, for the new construction of a four-story apartment building with seventy-three market-rate apartment units. Project will also have one-hundred-and-thirty-one parking stalls. The developer is M R E S Square owner. It's managed by Adam Kirshenbaum. This project represents an eighteen-point-one-million-dollar investment in the neighborhood. The request is for one million eight-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars in TIF support. I note that the project is also in the influence area of the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Plan, and is also within an extremely blighted area. So we're looking at a twenty-year TIF term, and a portion of the new excess tax revenues, ad verum, TIF revenues, will go towards the construction of the streetcar system. Project meets our required criteria for the TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, one-hundred-and-fourteen-forty West Sun Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. With me today is Cassie Innis and Aiden Posey of the development team. I think Don pretty much covered everything, but we are here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this proposed project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents on number twenty? Seeing none any opponents.
Again, Luke Schor, twenty-five-twenty-two South Thirty-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I promise this is the last thing I'm going to speak on today. But this is part of the Destination Midtown Area Plan, I believe, if that's correct. And is it seventy-three units? Is that what was just said? Yeah, seventy-three units with total parking at one-hundred-and-thirty-one stalls. One-hundred-and-thirty-one parking stalls for seventy-three units. The... Part of the plan for this area is to eliminate conditions which are detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. If we're trying to make... The Destination Midtown Area Plan also states that it wants pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use development. There is transportation right on Leavenworth. There's multiple bus stops, and they are strongly encouraged to provide indoor bike facilities. We have to not... I don't know if it's a problem, the parking, if it's parking minimums, but that's something that you guys control as city council. We are trying to redo our downtown because we bulldoze our buildings to make parking lots, and yet we have another density area in Midtown, and we're making parking lots. So we're trying to fix a problem in one area, and we're creating that same problem a little bit in another area. So if you could work with the developers and like cut down on those parking minimums, that would be helpful. Also, there's eleven spots on Leavenworth. I know there's a bike lane there, and I drove... I rode my bike pretty close, like a block away from this to get here today. Having cars parked with a bike lane beside it, the doors, when they open up, is a danger to cyclists and stuff. So I would say, don't even keep the parking on Leavenworth. That's pretty bleak if you're trying to walk, too. There's no trees for shade in this example. So I would like to see that building setback, put trees, make it a human-scale again. Let that bike path run past there. Less impervious spaces or impervious surfaces, parking lots is what I'm talking about. I'm just trying to push the developers a little bit here today. I know this will probably pass, and I thank them for getting some density in Omaha. But let's start thinking about how we can solve these problems, because we just came in here a few months ago to talk about how we're going to make our city greener. Let's start kind of pushing that a little bit. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience today?
Louisiana minus twenty-seven-zero-nine, Dewey Avenue. I'm opposed to this because I don't believe the area is blighted at all. You got a rendering here that this... There's actual things right now. This rendering is not accurate. It's not desolate. I also want to congratulate the TIF committee because with your approval, you guys got rid of Dr. Cheryl Logan, the separate intended of Omaha Public Schools.
We're supposed to keep the topic to redevelopment here?
Yeah, when you approve TIF projects like this one and this streetcar, the TIF financing denies funds to local public bodies like the school districts. So projects like these promise growth, but not budgetary growth for public bodies like the school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience? Seeing none. I think we do have one opponent by Zoom, Mr. Kolokowski. We'll get you off mute. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, city council members. Thank you. I'm Michael Kolokowski, and I am at one-thirty-two North Thirty-ninth Street in Omaha, and also a bicycle commuter, commuted to work and then back home quickly so I could hop on this Zoom meeting today. All right, the other gentleman already touched on one of the concerns. I'm quite concerned about the parking spots to unit ratio. So I won't talk about that. Suffice it to say that I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed, especially if the city is moving towards that urban core redevelopment and transit-oriented design. The primary reason that I wanted to speak today about this is I pulled up the attachment and looked at this, and by the developer's own admittance, they called the area extremely blighted. When I look at the attachment, it shows studios at one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars rent per month, and then two-bedroom at nineteen-seventy-three. So my question for you all as city council members is, why again do we have yet another apartment complex going in with zero affordable housing? We need to stop that in Omaha. If the area is extremely blighted, I don't consider twelve-hundred to two-thousand-plus a month affordable rent. Doesn't mean that every unit needs to be affordable, but some do, right? There's no mention of affordable housing in this attachment. And so I think that that needs to be reconsidered, especially in that particular area at Thirtieth and Leavenworth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Don, can you come up, please? Couple of questions. Can you define specifically what extremely blighted is, number one? And number two, did this comply with the law for TIF under the extremely blighted reference that was made?
I'll start with number two, yes. It does comply with the criteria for TIF. And the criteria for extremely blighted, there are two of them, demographic data. One of them is an unemployment rate that's, I believe, it's two-hundred percent of the state rate. And the other has to do with, I think it's per capita income, if I recall right. And no, no, pardon me. It's a poverty rate. I'm confusing the CRA criteria with the EBA criteria. The poverty rate needs to exceed a certain threshold. It's based on the state rate. And this area was designated as an extremely blighted area, along with, I'd say, another five or six other areas, all kind of in a package, and each one qualified on its own. So, yes, it meets the criteria for extremely blighted under state law, and this project meets the TIF program criteria.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And another question I have, Don. The... If this is passed here today, Omaha Public Schools, other entities, are they losing property or are they losing value of money that they're going to get from, if this is passed now, to what they were getting yesterday?
They do not lose anything. The state law requires that the pre-existing taxes that are flowing to the taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the school district, that those not be reduced by virtue of a TIF project. And the taxes that are being paid on the four properties that are there now will continue to flow to the school at that rate. It is a new valuation where the taxes get reinvested back into the project using tax money that it generates itself. So it's not coming out of the city's bucket of cash somewhere. It's not coming from the school district. And at the end of a certain period of time, it goes back on the tax rolls, and it benefits the school district. When we do extremely blighted area designations and CRA designations, we send out notices to all the other taxing jurisdictions. And they're all on board with TIF. They realize that if they forego a little bit now, that the delayed gratification is worth the wait.
Okay, and when that goes through the TIF committee, city legal and others look at this before it ever gets to us, correct?
That is correct. The TIF committee takes a good look at everything from traffic, engineering, zoning, financial structure of the deal, you know, through our finance director and our city law office. It gets pretty close scrutiny.
Okay, thanks, Don.
I would also note that the one-hundred-and-thirty-one parking space, fifty-one of them will be inside the building, and this has been a developer's choice. It's not a matter of a mandate from the city's zoning ordinance that they provide that many spaces. So it's more of a market rate choice made by the developer. Additionally, the rendering shows just the building. It is along a major... Excuse me, a major city corridor. So some of our design standards will apply. So there will be some street trees, even though they're not shown in the rendering.
Thanks, Don. And another comment, Michael, who's a constituent of mine on Zoom there, he brought up a fair point on affordable housing units that are desperately needed. I can tell people out listening to Michael, in common is... They're very close by here, and I did a tour recently with a state senator at a separate time as well, of a building they're working on, a project for affordable housing units. It's on Park Avenue. I want to say either ten-twenty-nine or ten-forty-nine Park Avenue. And then behind that, South Twenty-Ninth Street, there's a second building that they're redoing, affordable housing units. And they also... I wrote a letter in support of a twenty-million-dollar grant, I believe it was, with Senator Wayne's bill to try to get additional funds for another building nearby there on, I believe, Popleton, that they applied for, that I wrote a letter in support of. So I know certainly we understand the affordable housing issue, and the city's doing all we can in the... With ARPA money, philanthropic match, maybe even with Senator Wayne's bill, that there'll be some more funds coming. But I wanted... I appreciate Michael bring that up from the Zoom earlier, but that is something we're working on, and we think about every day. And in respect to this location, I know there's a dry cleaners there, and there's a tattoo parlor. I believe those are going to be torn down. Larry, is that correct? Okay. And that used to be an old bingo hall there years ago, where that parking lot's been sitting vacant for years. So it'll be good to get some construction going on there, and some nice new apartments for people in the area to live in. And again, we're not ignoring the affordable housing issue we got. There's other things we're working on with that, as I mentioned. So I'll make a motion to support this here today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items twenty-three through sixty-two are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, and I'll acknowledge for council members, we have a representative by Zoom on items twenty-one through twenty-four if you have any questions.
Excuse me, sir. Did you say fifty-eight or twenty-four?
This is twenty-one through sixty-two.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, forty-nine-twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street, Omaha, Nebraska. You know, I looked at number fifty-eight, and I've told Ms. Bridget Hadley of the Planning Department several times that Mr. William Barney, or Will Barney, programs are for kids, or not kids, eighteen and under. Yet, what they were speaking about earlier, which these folks have just finished talking about, these housing. And you could help us here, Mr. Reddison. Did you tell me that Benson Park is up for sale?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Anyway, housing's a problem, especially all those folks got put out of the house right around Christmas time. But that is a problem. I understand. But in the meantime, we... This five-hundred thousand, can you make sure that Mrs. Johnson, that the Peace Corps, which we've been working with, is a part of this program, Mr. Barney, because he has a wonderful program, Mr. Wood, by step up, but it doesn't address some of the problems us baby boomers are facing. It's almost very similar to the young man who became state senator to replace Senator Chambers. He has no idea what baby boomers are going through. So that's okay. But in the meantime, this five-hundred thousand, we're trying to work with the Peace Corps and the USDA to bring to North Omaha, because if Benson go up for sale, we're going to plant, because we don't see any blue-collar or white-collar or lower... What is it? Blue-collar, white-collar jobs coming in North Omaha or Omaha, period. Basically downtown, I don't know where all these jobs are going to come from to pay for all this stuff. The job market here, since the meatpacking plants have left, has created a big problem. Governor Thome, back in the day, Senator Zerinsky, Senator Dave Kern, and Howdaw, they all helped sponsor me go out the country to come back with information to help the city of Omaha. He kept saying, Donnie, whatever you find out, it will help the city of Omaha and the state of Nebraska. So I hope that the Peace Corps will continue to try to open up here in North Omaha and the USDA, because we shouldn't have to go to Fremont to get our funding from the United States Department of Agriculture in Fremont. Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone... Any other testifiers on twenty-one through sixty-two?
Duwan Reddick, Executive Director for the Hope Center for Kids, twenty-two-hundred North Twentieth Street, here for item number forty-seven to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to acknowledge your request for me to engage in dialogue with Willie Barney, and as it relates to your recommendation for Peace Corps.
I thank you very much, ma'am, because we need to go in that direction. I believe that's what they sent me out of the country to do research for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I had a question on number sixty-two. I think Joni was going to be here, Mr. Levy.
Mr. President, council members, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, seventeen-hundred Farnham Street, here in my volunteer capacity as chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the Omaha Housing Authority. Apologize for my lack of coat and tie. I didn't know I'd be here until about noon today.
David, good afternoon. I appreciate you coming down today.
Sure.
I know I talked to Joni this morning, Mr. Doherty, his appointment, which I'm going to be supporting today. I appreciate his service and the work that the OHA Board does. I was just going to ask, I know, as you're well aware, David, there was some issues that I won't go rehash with the employees that were laid off and let go from OHA a couple of years ago. How are the... How are the conditions of the property with the new employees that have taken over for OHA properties in general?
You know, as a board member, I can tell you, I mean, we're, we're not day-to-day operators of these properties. But the reports that we get statistically for the properties across the housing authority is that we're continuing to make positive progress in turning units faster between tenants. And our occupancy numbers are up across the housing authority properties. So at least from what I'm aware of as a board member, things are, the condition of the properties and the occupancy of the properties is good and improving.
Thank you for that. And the public safety challenges we've had in OHA, some of the towers and other OHA properties, how would you say that's been in the year 2022? Has it gotten better or is it getting worse? Room for improvement?
You know, certainly there's still room for improvement. It's a constant challenge, security is. But we are continuing to invest in cameras and other security measures to continue to try and improve security at the towers and other OHA properties. Again, as a board member, I certainly haven't noticed an increase or anything that surprised me in the reports that we get about security or, or issues in the towers or other housing authority properties.
Okay. Mr. Levy, I appreciate you coming down today and you're forgiven for not wearing a tie. I know it was short notice. And as I said, I'm going to support Mr. Doherty. He's got a good resume. I mean, One World, CEO of that, I believe, or CFO.
Uh, COO.
COO, okay. And I appreciate his service. I know these boards, and I've spoken to the mayor, it's not easy to get people to want to step up. And I am glad that people do step up. I just, I'm sorry he couldn't be here. I was going to ask him directly. Just, those were questions I wanted to ask. And I appreciate you coming down today.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate your support. Joel has been a great board member and he brings great experience with his work at One World, helping them operate all that they do. And appreciate the council's support for his reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add, I support this appointment as well. Ms. Porter, this might be a question for you. There, just a, if you might want to provide an update on Benson Towers. I know there was concern there over the last few weeks regarding, you know, the heating systems and some utility issues that I think are being resolved. But if you might want to
Yes.
Observe the update there?
I absolutely can. Joni Poor, 1823 Harney Street. And with the very frigid temperatures that we had, where wind chills were down in the negative 40s, those sorts of things. Our tower at Benson, many of our, or all of our towers have the boiler units that help to run heating and water, hot water throughout the buildings. And unfortunately, we had a temperature setting that was off. And so that caused the entire boiler system to freeze up, which meant that the water was not functioning for the, for the Benson Tower for a period of time, which also then kicked into a heat issue. So the first call that we had received the Friday before Christmas was actually a heat issue. The heat was fully restored that Friday within an hour of our staff responding to Benson Tower, again, the Friday before Christmas. But getting water back restored was, was a bigger task. It was still quite frigid for a couple of more days, if we all remember. And probably some, some of us are still cold from that time period and still thawing out. But it took us a couple of days just to get the boiler thawed out. And then what had happened with that boiler is the water pressure, just from the city's water coming into the system, gets us up to the fifth floor. Benson has 11 floors. So we couldn't get all the way up without a pump. And when the water froze, it burned up the pump. So then we needed to have that pump repaired. By the time we got everything thawed out and realized that the pump was what the problem was, it's Christmas. And so Ferguson Mechanical, we called in a favor. And they opened specially for us on Monday, the 26th, even though they were not open, and let our staff come in, our plumbing staff that we employ, and let them come in and get the parts they needed. And the water was restored then on Monday. And it has been fully functional since then. There was a report, unfortunately, in the media that there wasn't heat and people were using ovens, which was, we actually reached out to the media because that was just so very concerning. It's extraordinarily dangerous to suggest or for anyone to ever do such a thing. And certainly for the media to put it on, you know, for people to view on television was very concerning as well. And it just simply wasn't the case. When I said to the reporter, I said, you were in the building, yes. And you were warm, yes. So that was, that was a frustrating moment for us. But we did follow up and confirmed that the heat was functional Friday and the water was back Monday.
Okay. Thanks for that update.
Thank you.
I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion on items 21 through 62? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 63, in ordinance to approve a tenure interlocal agreement with Douglas County for the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau is amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
The vote on number 63 is today. I'll note there is an amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 64, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Waterford Crossing. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Beers documents received from council member Melton.
This item was postponed from the December 13th meeting to encourage the applicant to meet with the neighborhood. The public hearing and vote are continued today. Any proponents on number 64?
Hi, Melissa Monroe, 14834 Hannover Street, representing the Waterford Homeowners Association. Just wanted to thank the city council for allowing us the opportunity to be able to have the meeting. We did have the meeting and it was about a 50-50 split between the residents. And we're just going to go ahead and propose it as it moves forward.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Hello, I'm Emily Maluski with Verizon Wireless, located at 4002 South 149th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. And I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon. Michelle Roth with Great Plains Land Services, 508 North Polk Circle, Papillion. I'm here also representing the applicant, Omaha Cellular Telephone Company, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Here to answer any questions, too.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
I'm going to move to support this, but I want to especially thank Melissa for taking the time to come down and support the whole neighborhood, get the meeting organized, and then come back. At least you got called up before 3:30. I think the last time it was closer to almost 6:00 PM. So. But thanks for taking the time and representing everybody. It was a great meeting. And I think we exchanged a lot of kind of thoughts and we got a lot of information. So I just really appreciate your efforts on behalf of your neighborhood and the people that live there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll, Ms. Melton was spot on. Melissa, I appreciated your efforts. I know you and I talked after the last meeting. And I was glad to hear that there was a great crowd that showed up at Waterford there. And I want to, Emily, thank you for Verizon showing up there. That's all we asked. And that's why we laid that over, because I didn't go into marketing, but communication companies need to communicate. And when you had that neighborhood there with Ms. Melton attended and I didn't, but I got a good report on it that you answered questions or whoever you had there. And that's all we asked. I mean, that, that goes such a long way. We wouldn't have had to come back for another meeting. At least I wouldn't have voted to lay it over. But the efforts that were made and the neighborhood folks that showed up, I think, by all accounts, it was a good meeting. And that's, as Ms. Johnson mentioned earlier, people need to talk to each other. There needs to be communication. So remember that in 2023, I know you will. That'll go a long way in future things that come before the council, in my view. But thank you.
Thank you. Motion in a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
64 is approved, seven to zero. Item 65 and 66 can be considered together relating to park improvements for Dreamland Park Fountain and Lynch Park concession restroom remodel.
Public hearing and vote on items 65 and 66 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
All second. Need further lights? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 67 through 69 can be considered together for a parking facility at Parkland Preserve, or Heartland Preserve. Item 67, a resolution to approve a design-build delivery system. 68 is a resolution to approve the policies for the design-build contract. Item 69, a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement with SID 583.
Public hearing and vote on items 67, 68, and 69 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Jason Lanahan. My address is 177, or 17070 Wright Plaza here in Omaha. With me today is Mr. Jeff Silver, who is Executive Vice President and General Counsel of Applied Underwriters. He is also the SID 583 Board Chair and also Mr. John Bachman, who is here as the SID Attorney. What we are here to talk about is Hartwood Preserve. Let's see if I can control this. Okay, Hartwood Preserve, from Pacific Street, South Pacific to Dodge Street, 500 acre master plan community. And specifically, what we're going to talk about today is the row. So the row serves as, let's call it the downtown of, of Hartwood. Quick massing study to show you quantities and densities to give you an idea of scale. And as we apply architecture to it, this is what we are, this is specifically what we're here to talk about today. So we have three resolutions in front of you. And they are essentially aimed to accomplish two things. One is to allow the SID to fund and construct parking structures to support this development. And two, allow them to use a design-build delivery method. So that's really, so three things, three resolutions to accomplish two things. What you see here is an approximately $800 million mixed-use development that consists of Class A office, four-star hotel, four residential communities, and ground floor retail. What's interesting about this and what's exciting about this, based on the demographics, based on Applied Underwriters' vision and their support and partnership, we believe what we can accomplish is the best mixed-use center for sure in the state, maybe in the Midwest. And we feel very strong about that. Based on the demographics and the interest, we're also very confident we will bring a number of first-to-market national retailers to Omaha. So what we're hearing is Omaha is finally large enough to, to attract them. And two, this is the one place they would go. So. So what we're looking to do, so we're looking to expend dollars to build parking, which increases density, which allows us to do all these things. Note that we're outside of the city limits. So we really have very limited development tools. We had to get quite creative and spend a long time meandering through state legislature and back here to find development tools to help us do something that is not surface parking, strip malls, and neighborhoods only on the periphery of the city. So we're pretty excited about where we are. I think a couple of other points that are, that are important to note, that we build these parking structures. The adjacent development, our buildings are responsible for operating and maintaining them. So there's no expense to the SID for that. And why that's important is should the city, or when and if the city annexes this development down the road, it's important to note that there will be no expenses or costs associated with operating these garages to the city. So, and I'm going to try to keep this short. I know Mr. Silver wants to make a few comments. But, so there's quite a bit more nuance. But I think it's important to note that this has been vetted by their SID board, SID fiscal agent, SID attorneys, SID bond counsel, if not through state legislature, city finance, and city law. So we've done quite a bit of homework. And now we're here today in front of you all to kindly ask for your support and approval so we can get started on this exciting project.
Thank you.
So with that, I think Mr. Silver might make a few comments and then we'll obviously be here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. Jeffrey Silver, 10805 Old Mill Road. We are Applied Underwriters is developing the Hartwood Preserve, which is 500 acres in Northwest Omaha. We have been partnering with Jason Lanahan. His development is going to be one of the final pieces in that magnificent development. So we would ask you to approve this. And as you know, our corporate headquarters is nearing completion, near 144th and Pacific. Will be one of the best corporate headquarters in this town has ever seen for a long, long time. So we would ask your approval of this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And I've been studying Mr. Lanahan and his progress. But we're going to have to block some of this development if North Omaha is not getting a piece of this new private sector. If any, is this going to be private funding or is it going to?
You have to address the city council.
Yeah, well, yes. Ms. Betty Abbott on the city council, Mr. Subian Zalor on the city council. Going back to some of the folks that I had worked with in the past on the city council. Again, when are they going to start talking about some development for North Omaha? Now, Mr. Fredson, I asked you before, is Benson up for sale? You said no. Can you put it up for sale so we can start our own development in North Omaha? What about that?
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. I'll just maybe ask one question of Mr. Curtis that I asked this morning, just, just for the record. Obviously, the renderings and the progress we're seeing here is exciting and will be a great addition, I think, to the city overall, once it is part of the city, which of course will be in our interest over time, as it is when we consider our annexation packages in the future. I believe this is the first time, though, we would be doing parking structures via this mechanism and via the SID. And so whenever we do these things, we always want to make sure the city has analyzed, you know, debt ratios going forward and making sure it's not a burden to the city in the future, should it want to annex this area, which it surely would want to in the future. So, Mr. Curtis, that's a question to you to make sure you've analyzed that and think it's also acceptable from that perspective.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. You are right, this is the first SID in the state to do a garage. So it's relatively unique in that sense. It's also, as you can tell by the renderings, a fairly unique development in general, just because of its size and scope. Normally, a debt ratio, in this case of 5.84, would give us quite a bit of pause. While it gives us a little pause, they do have access, in our case, in, in the course of annexation, we would have access to a number of occupation taxes and other sales and other taxes that we wouldn't currently have access to. And they don't have current access to, but we would, that would offset that higher debt ratio.
Okay. So no concern from your perspective in terms of future annexation of this development?
No, I mean, they're always dependent on build-out and a few different things. But in general, no.
Okay. And I would see it to have benefit to the density we're talking about and to the design we're seeing here. So I just wanted to make sure we had thought through that perspective, and I think you have. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 70, in ordinance vacating the east-west alley lying west of 75th Street and east of Lot 8, Block 73, Benson Edition. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 70 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 71, in ordinance to approve an amendment to a grant award contract with the Nebraska Department of Natural Resources for the combined sewer overflow program.
Public hearing on number 71 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 72, in ordinance to approve a pedestrian bridge maintenance agreement for SID 583.
Public hearing on number 72 is today. Proponents, please.
John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of SID 583. John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of SID 583, and available to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You know, when Senator Nelson retired and I was flying kids out of Millard Airport, he said he was going to send me to Washington DC.
You've got to keep your remarks to this item, right?
Okay, now. Number 70, what, 72?
72.
Okay, now. Do you suppose all this Mr. Lanahan is doing is a wonderful thing? And, Winhoff, can you folks start taking some time for North Omaha? Winhoff is doing a wonderful job. I worked with him. I was out there in West Omaha the other day. Lanahan is doing a wonderful thing. I think that's a good project. In fact, that's what Mr. Richard Tocchetti talked about, parking, bigger problem, when he was on the city council. In the meantime, when are they going to start addressing funds and development for North Omaha? Because all those folks that lost their house, where are they going to live? You tell me, Mr. President. Me and you going to Washington DC and take somebody's spot. We'll figure this out.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents to number 72? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Item 73, in ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement of the fiscal year 2022 Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Grant.
Public hearing on number 73 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Steve Zibney, City of Omaha Planning Department, here to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 74, in ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal, group 2023-01.
Public hearing on number 74 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 75, in ordinance levying a special tax assessment for weeds, group 2023-02.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
I thought this would be my day to talk to you folks about some things. Donnie Johnson?
It's got to be about weeds and litter. Are you on number 75, right?
75?
All right.
Would you want me to get the name and address first, or the...
Yes.
Okay. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 952nd. Would you please ask Mr. Counsel to stop coming down here to the City Hall and getting all these contracts to do the weed and seed, and then paying these guys $5, and they can come down to the City Hall and get their own contract? I understand Ms. Brendan Counsel got in trouble, but Mr. Counsel and I have a disagreement about this. These folks say, "Look, I go out there and cut all this weed and seed for the city, and he gives me $5." I say, "Hit him in the eye. Let us fix that problem."
Any other opponents to number 75? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Item 76, in ordinance levying a special tax assessment for trees, group 2023-03.
Public hearing on number, and public hearing on number 76 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 77, in ordinance to approve an agreement with Ameritas Life Insurance Corporation for the dental plan.
Public hearing on number 77 is today. Proponents, please.
Kristen Cavill, City Benefits Manager, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 78, in ordinance to approve the proposal for group long-term disability insurance with Mutual of Omaha.
Public hearing on number 78 is today. Proponents, please.
Kristen Cavill, City Benefits Manager, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 79, in ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 10, Article 5, Division 5, entitled Small and Emerging Small Business Program.
Public hearing on number 79 is today. Proponents, please.
Stacy Holtquist, Assistant City Attorney, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, here's a good one for you, Mr. President, on this number 79. I went and flew down to Zimbabwe, right, and got access to uranium, and the federal government told me I was not qualified. So I understand, Mr. Palermo, what you have trouble with the federal government.
Small emerging business program, okay?
I'm trying to tell you what happened. My teacher from Iowa taught me how to get on Wall Street and Dow Jones and sell high-grade ore. And if I was not qualified, he told me not to do it. So if they're sticking their nose in your business, Mr. Palermo, I understand. They did it to me, too.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Stacy, I might just ask you a quick question. Either you or Christian on this, on the program here, just because I've supported this for a long time, and I think there is a lot of interest in it, and it's been successful. These changes, how would you describe these changes that are proposed to be voted on, I guess, in two weeks?
Stacy Holtquist, Assistant City Attorney. So these are, these are some clarification cleanup amendments, and they are only for a few portions of the Small and Emerging Small Business Program sections of the Omaha Municipal Code. Specifically, subsections J, K, L, and M of 10-200.1, which is the definition section. In that section, the amendments include for subsections J and K, a next-code percentage reference, and in subsections L and M, the words such as certified are being amended to authorized. And then in subsection 10-200.3, again, the word certified is being amended to authorized. Same thing for subsection 10-200.4, certified to authorized. There is also the use of the word subcontractor is added, again, for clarification. Section 10-200.6, Soliciting Department is inserted because the Soliciting Department is not always public works, which was, is the existing language. These are all clarification amendments for which we are requesting your approval.
Okay. Doesn't change the intent or the goals of the program, just clarification items?
Absolutely not. Absolutely, yes.
Great. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Non-action items, items 83 through 117, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:37.